Ms. Vaughn, you were saying?
Was it... Oh, okay. Now it's on? Okay. What I was asking is, am I correct that initially the restorative practices was rolled out with the initial training geared toward secondary? Is that... Is that correct? So basically, yeah. So basically, a few select schools were... and there were representatives from those schools. It was kind of a pilot thing with the restorative practices. And then, I think, you know, it takes... this is a paradigm shift. This is a culture exchange because for a long time, we really didn't pay a lot of attention to a lot of the behavior stuff when we were more focused on the academic trail. So I think what happened is that it did not get the buy-in, first of all, because the communication may not have been as clear across the district as it needed to be. And then, I think it was difficult with the amount of mobility, not only with students, but also with staff, that as changes were happening, there wasn't a core team of people to implement those restorative practices at those pilot schools. So I think this is a more cohesive plan, and the restorative practices will be part of those positive expectations. And, you know, never was there... I mean, I witnessed several presentations of the restorative practices and went to many of the circles where it was happening in some of our schools. And there was never an "allow kids to be disrespectful." You know, respect starts with respecting yourself. And when you don't have the buy-in and everybody doesn't know the language, it's difficult to keep that communication solid. So I really think that was what happened, and I'm really enthusiastic about this plan being a more comprehensive plan, which is going to be implemented step by step across the district. And that's why I'm really optimistic about this, because I always felt that the initial rollout was spotty at best and that it was a mistake to start it with an emphasis in having taught a long year in middle school, having, you know, to start it there. It's the little kids. And to me, what you're saying about really putting an emphasis there and the common language and all of that, I think it's going to be much more successful. So I'm very optimistic. I don't want to give the wrong idea. But on the other hand, I just wanted to put it out there that there has been a problem in the elementary and some of the older elementary grades and middle school and even high school with that "R" respect students toward teachers. And that's going to take a lot of relearning, I think. So this is the reboot, and I'm very optimistic that this will work better.
Dr. Atkins?
Well, and one of the things I do want to emphasize is, you did have initial rollout where you had two things going on. You had one that was the training that occurred in, I think, approximately 30 schools. The other piece was the entire district's code of conduct was changed, and it needed to change, and restorative practices was added to the code of conduct. The difficulty there, though, and I can tell you, you know, just from my perspective, is that one of the things you have to do as a school administrator is, I think, you have to really work your code of conduct and the consequences within the code of conduct extremely well, including some of the tools that you have at your disposal, like Saturday School and detention. And what I was finding, what I have found, is that we do have inconsistent practice across the district. And the result of that has been that some of these tools that are in our toolbox weren't used as effectively as they should be. That requires an assistant principal. For example, and this is something I've really emphasized with our principals, is that I need your assistant principals to work hard at making sure students are serving consequences such as detention, such as Saturday School, and don't just let them pass through to ISS. You know, the other thing that can get a little bit frustrating is, don't do things that are pad numbers, such as create alternative suspension programs that really truly aren't alternative suspension programs. Glorified timeouts don't work. You have to do true alternative suspension programs that do work, that change student behavior. So I think that this is a learning curve for some administrators, but it's also an increase in expectations and accountability that assistant principals or those that are responsible discipline have to work to follow through to make sure that the consequences that, you know, you need to make the parent contact. You need to go above and beyond to make sure the kid serves the detention and don't just take the easy way out and let the kid go on to ISS, which is just... or OSS, which are consequences that just are not, you know, aren't as successful or as effective at changing behavior as other consequences are. Lastly, the respect thing is, that's the thing for me that, you know, there should be no tolerance of disrespectful educators, and there should be consequences in place. So I hear that every once in a while, and, you know, one of the things I would encourage any of the teachers to do is make sure that stuff is communicated to our staff so that we can look into it when necessary.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. So I see on this list of school leaders, there are some school counselors involved in this, too. So, I mean, part of this thing is the starting young and doing prevention and intervention. When you see someone demonstrating a behavior, there may be a need for them to get some coaching, get some help, have a parent contact, do those things that come before ISS, in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. And I feel like with the positive common language, this is going to be more likely to take hold.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah. I also, I like it as well, except that I want to see this accountability for our administrators because I feel like the principals... I hear that the principals haven't always bought into it. So I think that the accountability aspect, it needs to happen through all over the district, and so they need to know that we realize it's really important. I also want to see... I like to see the restorative practices with our own staff. I think that we need to give people second chances. We need to hear... We need to do the circle and find out what went wrong. And before we let someone go, I think that we need to figure out if that's... We have a shortage in staff and teachers and bus drivers, so if we can hang on to every one of them, we need to figure out what went wrong and how to help that. And I think the restorative aspect of that might help. So I love the restorative practices. So I'd like to see it for every aspect of the district, so...
Can I ask one question? What is the process in place, I guess, to monitor, for example, with administrators that are not following through with the plan besides, you know, Dr. Atkins speaking with... There's a... Between the time he gets it to talk to them, who... How are you monitoring that, if there is?
So a few things that are in place. Again, having Mr. Bradley be a part of going and into our schools. It actually is also a part of some of the things that we look at as we go to do our learning e-walks. So it is actually an element, an indicator that we are looking for in our e-learning walks. We also are using the data. As we gather our data on a quarterly basis, when these aspects are implemented within the schools, we should see a decrease in behavior concerns. At first, you oftentimes see an increase as it becomes implemented so that students learn the aspects and teachers learn how to implement. So oftentimes, there's an increase, a slight increase in discipline referrals and discipline elements, and then you begin to see a decrease. And so as we look at data, we will be able to help monitor that as we have conversations with teachers and students.
Perfect.
Those are the things that will allow us to best understand the true implementation that's taking place.
And that's what I was getting at, to have that trust and communication with the people on the ground floor that are doing it, the teachers and the teacher's aides and all, is really important. Great program.
Any other comments or questions? I have a couple of questions. First, I want to thank Mary, Ms. Fisher, for doing this because this is over my head, and I appreciate your explanation and your work with staff to get this done.
What does connecting with the community look like?
Well, that could be a variety of things, but what we'd like to do is make sure that our community understands what we're trying to do and that they also have the same language. So if a student is out in the community, they may see some of the same displays or hear some of the same language. If they go to the Stars Complex, if they're at the Stars Complex for an after-school event, is there somebody there that's also talking to them about being respectful, about being a role model? Are they ready for their life or for the next day at school? The interesting thing in previous work in a similar vein, I was actually approached by the sheriff's office that said, "Can you come train us? We want to be able to use the same language out in the community so that there's a good connection, there's a seamless whole."
So do you want me, as a mom, to be using these five Rs at home? And how are you going to drill them into my head?
Absolutely. So that becomes part of that work.
I got a lot in my head.
Yeah. But, yeah, how do we make parent resources? How do we involve our parents? How do we communicate with them, whether it's through public service or through PTO at school, SAC committee, you know? So how do we get our parents connected in as well?
Including it in newsletters that go out from our schools, having community members understand that, having businesses that maybe are willing to help with incentives when students are displaying these particular attributes. It really does become an element that brings a community together when someone that sees a child at the grocery store that says, "Tell me about your five Rs and are you being successful with that?" And so in addition to the ABCs, we have the five Rs. We're trying very hard to be very systematic, but also to pare it down so that our community, our parents, and mostly our students can understand the expectations.
So, Dr. Atkins, I'll make a note to try to talk to Nick and find out what Astero can do for those four schools down there to get incentives going. And I'll work with... Through you with them or whatever.
Okay.
Hold on one second. One more question, one comment. When will this be fully implemented?
So I don't know if we can establish an end date when it will be fully implemented, but we will definitely have training beginning this next semester. We'll be training and building it into our PBIS systems over the summer and into the next year. So I would say that we're up and running at the beginning of the next school year, completely.
And then, my last comment is, as you talk about mobility, it helps me to realize that we're addressing some of our growing pains because in many ways, I think we operate as a small district, and this is allowing us to operate as a large district, which we should be doing and making sure all of our schools are on the same page. Instead of being a district of schools, we're a school district. I talk about that a lot with you, Dr. Atkins, with regard to the athletic director position and the importance of making sure that our students are served in a uniform way. By having that position down here, all the athletic programs will be on the same page. And the interdepartmental connection and work together to get this done and talking about the sheriff's department is really exciting to me. So thank you for that. Ms. Jordan?
The only thing I was going to add is that this is a constant thing with the retraining and reminding people of the expectations because people always thrive on positive versus the negativity. And then, as far as getting this out, I know we're going into this whole branding for the school district that definitely could be part of this, you know? So as we move forward, those Rs are part of our branding and who we are.
Great.
I have one quick question. Have you presented to DAC already?
No, ma'am. You are our first presentation. We wanted to make sure that we brought it to you all first, and then we will have the opportunity to share with other advisory committees so that they are aware and helping us to come up with implementation plans and ways that we can best move forward.
And that one would be a good one as far as starting to get it into the community and the parents as well. Thank you.
Great. So we're two minutes over, but it was a good discussion, so thank you. Next, we have district debt strategies, the ever-exciting subject.
Mr. Blerton, you should have a theme song. Money, 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 money.
That's funny. I was thinking of a song to try and open this, you know, debt strategies and...
I tell you, Matt.
I know we have new members on the board and didn't know how, you know, how you would take if I just started breaking into some kind of song about, "Let's talk about debt, baby." No? Okay.
We'll combine those and make a medley.
Well, and today, this briefing is a terrific example of just how much action, activities, tasks, decisions that are being made every single day in this district. And so we're going to take you, you know, from restorative practices and positive prevention in the schools and district-wide and, as you said, take you into the fantastic and always fun world of finance. Specifically, well, I feel that way, and I know Jerry does as well, and specifically about debt strategies. And some of you on the board, good afternoon... Well, good afternoon to all of you and Dr. Atkins and Mr. Dotig. Some of you on the board have met, to my left, Jerry Ford and our new board members. I'm happy to introduce him to you. Jerry Ford is a principal, not of a school, but the principal-owner of Ford and Associates, who has been with the school district, an invaluable advisor in the world of finance, investments, debt strategy since 2002. And I have been honored to be... Have worked with him since I've been in this position and his associates at his firm. You know, they're a great team to bounce ideas off of, to ask what-ifs, to run scenarios by, from investment strategies and absolutely what strategies we have available to us as it relates to debt. And as you know, school districts, Lee County included, we have significant capital needs, and we've heard about what those significant capital needs are from a facility's perspective, whether it's construction, maintenance, safety, security, and technology. You know, we've presented those to you. We're going to hear about one of those projects after this presentation. And with the sales tax, we have a lot of flexibility and more options available to us as it relates to debt, you know? And so we wanted to brief you on what those are, kind of give you an idea of where we are currently as far as our debt and what options that we have available to us. And if you don't know Jerry, I know he can introduce himself better than I can, but, you know, he and his firm provide a wealth of financial knowledge and expertise, and there's no pun intended when I say wealth of that. They work with many school districts in the state of Florida, and Jerry himself sits on the municipal securities rulemaking board. They make rules up there in DC, and he's been sitting on that board for some time. And I'm always excited to work with him and introduce him to you. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up the presentation, and I will go ahead and let Jerry say, "Hey."
Thank you. Good afternoon. It's good to be with you, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens, Ms. Jordan. Good to make your acquaintance. For those of you that I know already, it's nice to be back with you again. This is the exciting world of finance, and if you missed it, there's a box with no-dos in front of each one of you. So you're all here for this presentation. This afternoon, what we'd like to do over the next few minutes is just to give you a brief overview of the debt that you have outstanding and then talk specifically about what that debt looks like, the types of debt you can issue. For those of you who are new, we offer every board member the opportunity to sit down with you one-on-one and go through about an hour to an hour and a half presentation, which goes through your debt profile in detail, which we talk about ratings and how the rating agencies view school districts, what factors they examine, and what the positives and negatives are of your credit profile and what type of flexibility you have going forward. So Mr. Blerton and I have talked about this at your convenience for each one of you. For those of you who are new or those of you who are not new who would like a refresher course, we'll be back down here and we'll be sitting down with you at your convenience.
Thank you.
So thank you. So currently, the district has 10 separate series of debt outstanding that are known as certificates of participation. They look like a bond, they feel like a bond, they smell like a bond, but they actually... Investors actually buy a piece, a participation, in a stream of lease payments, and that's how they get paid. And those lease payments come from the payments that are made that you make for the schools that you finance from a leasing corporation. That leasing corporation has... Happens to be your own captive leasing corporation. It's the School District of Lee County, Florida, School Board Leasing Corporation. Its members are yourselves. They sit as a mirror of what you do. And when we go out in the market and issue debt through this way, they borrow the money, they own the projects, and they lease those projects back to you. Those projects have financed many... Those bonds have financed many projects in the school district, including the facility that you're sitting in today, was financed through those certificates of participation. You can go out and borrow money through this lease structure for an individual school or for multiple schools at each time, and you've been doing this since the early 1990s. I think your first issue was in 1990, if I remember correctly. The first one I was involved in was 2002 and had been involved with basically most of the 10 that are on the books at this point in time. And while each one of those is separate and distinct and financed the projects that are under it, they're under what's called a master lease. So if you would picture an umbrella, you have a number of schools that are financed independently under that umbrella, but they're covered by the same umbrella. So each year, when you authorize your payments on those leases, you have the ability to authorize them all or authorize none of them. You cannot do them individually. And if you choose not to authorize those lease payments, you have to walk away from the schools that were financed by those. It's called a master lease. You'd have to vacate this building, you'd have to vacate high schools, elementary schools, middle schools. So the lawyers hate to hear me say this, but there is a famous comedian named Ron White, and he has a routine where he talks about getting kicked out of an establishment, and he's confronted by the police, and they tell him at that point he has the right to remain silent, but he says, "I did not have the ability." You have the right to walk away from this lease every year, but you do not have the ability to do so. To not make those lease payments would be catastrophic for you. So that is the structure that you're under. There is currently just under $400 million outstanding in that. In addition, you have a note outstanding. It's called a tax anticipation note. It's $25 million. It is due before the end of this fiscal year, and it's simply a cash flow balancing tool that you use, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Your taxable value right now is almost $86 billion. Your maximum annual debt service is just under $47 million. So it only takes just over half a mil for you to pay all of those certificates of participation off, or what we refer to lovingly as COPs. If you look at this chart, this shows you each individual series of COPs outstanding by the principal amount that is outstanding. And as you can see, you have a lot of that totaling up to about $46 million a year and then tapering down until you get to 2029. And then, all you have left are these Series 2011 COPs, which go out to 3036. So the life of your debt in comparison with many other school districts, if you looked at Miami, Broward, Orange, Palm Beach, yours is much shorter, and it takes less mileage to make those payments off than those school districts would. So you're in a less leveraged position than they are, and you're leveraged for a shorter period of time, and that is a significant credit positive. Okay?
Everybody still with us? Okay.
And if at any time I go too fast or I use an acronym that I failed to define, raise your hand and I'll back up and hit it. So again, COPs, certificate of participation. When you add the principal and interest together, this is what it comes up to. So right now, just under $52 million is your peak. That number is known as maximum annual debt service, and the rating agencies use that in their calculations. Investors look at that, what's your maximum exposure? And that's that .57 mils out of your capital outlay levy, which you're legally allowed to levy one and a quarter mils, so it's less than half of that amount. And you can see that, again, that tapers off going out to 3036. All of this was structured so at the time each of these individuals were issued, if you went out and owned mortgages on 10 houses, each one of those mortgages would be standalone. They'd have a payment that's equal every month for the life of the mortgage, just looking at it in isolation. This was structured so that when you added all of these together, they basically came up to be equivalent when you added them together, not just one at a time, except for that last issue that we... The 2011 issue that stretched out a little bit further to keep your maximum annual debt service from peaking too high. Okay?
So is this saying, then, on this one chart, that by 2029, we only have the one Series 2011?
That's exactly what it's saying. So what it means is that you have tremendous flexibility out there if you needed to... If you needed to use more of that capital outlay levy to incur debt to build new schools. There are certain projects that certificates of participation are very effective in financing, new additions, new schools, new wings. There are certain things that it's not as good at financing. We really don't lose it, use it on a standalone basis for doing roofs, for doing windows, for doing those kinds of things. Why? Because we have to give a leasehold interest in the facility to the certificate holders. So they want the whole school. We're not going to give away a school for a roof. So when we look at your various financing options, we look at what are we... What do we need to build? And how's the best way to secure that so that you get the lowest cost of borrowing?
Where does the income from... And maybe this is someone else's, the income from the tax that we have sent? How does that affect...
Doesn't affect this. It is standalone. It's almost siloed, if you will. Under state law, you have the ability to levy... This board at its discretion has the ability to levy up to one and a half mils for capital outlay purposes. It used to be two until the legislature got greedy after the financial downturn. They took a quarter of it away from you. They said on a temporary basis. That temporary basis looked... Worked so well, they took another quarter of it away the next year, and then they said, "No, we're not going to give it back to you." So it's gone from two mils down to one and a half, but that can only be used for capital outlay, very specific set of projects. Your sales tax, on the other hand, can be used in ways that the COPs are less efficient at, and it can be used for that 10-year period that the voters approve and for the range of projects that was listed in your referendum. So it stands on its own, and it has a different impact on the district's credit. When you issue bonds against that sales tax, those bonds are secured by those sales tax collections. They're not secured by the facilities. So in many ways, that's a more effective solution for you.
Right. Okay.
That's a perfect segue. With the sales tax revenue, you know, it becomes its own line item as far as a new revenue for our capital plan, and then how are we going to spend it? It will also be in the expense side of our capital plan and the options that that provides to us as well as, you know, this is our current look at what our COP, our certificates of participation debt, looks like today, but with the addition of Lehigh Senior High School, Triple M coming onboard here this summer, Double M, the next middle school, the elementary and middle, or K-8 in our South Zone. We have a lot of large capital projects coming, not to mention just maintaining what we already have. So there's a lot of flexibility that we have available to us, and we have a lot of options. And so the segue is, so what is available to us and what have we been talking about? And what are some of the strategies that make the most sense for long-term capital projects, like new construction, as well as some of the shorter-term capital projects, especially within that 10-year window of time? especially within that ten-year window of time for the sales tax?
So, we're going to talk a little bit about the different types of options here, specifically short-term financing, and we're going to address it briefly because you do have a tax anticipation note outstanding, and then, we'll talk about the COPS versus the sales tax bonds. So, as y'all know as well as I do, our school districts are faced with significant capital needs, not only for facilities, but for equipment, for transportation. The number of overage bus fleets around the state is astounding. Some needs are continual, and they're cyclical, you know, renewal and replacement, bus replacement. Others are based on growth or other circumstances. So, when you have 1,000, 2,000 students coming to your district in a given year, you're going to be adding classrooms, you're going to be adding facilities. State and local revenues have declined significantly over my years in the state of Florida, which has been since 1990, when there were things like PICO that gave significant payments to, it's Public Education Capital Outlay, by the way, that, that gave significant amounts to school districts, other capital programs from the state that have been cut back, and then, them cutting back on your ability to, to raise local capital improvement revenues through that millage that you're authorized to do. So, more and more of it has fallen on you. And then, operationally, revenue and expenditure timing disparities can create cash shortfalls. What do I mean by that? Well, if you were to have Kelly and Jeanette show you what their cash flows look like on a monthly or weekly basis, you'd see something that's very, very consistent. You would see all of your money start coming in at the end of November, the first of December. They would rise up through the beginning of March, when that last ad valorem tax collection came in, and then, you would start spending down. And that low point would occur in the last week of October, or the first week of November. And you would sitting, be sitting there waiting for that next tax collection to come in. And what can happen is, you're either faced with having your general fund borrow money from your other funds, or you go out and borrow a temporary cash flow loan that may be less expensive than borrowing from your other funds, to bridge you to that first, to that tax payment. Okay? That's what that tax anticipation note is for, and that's, and that's what it does. A word about fund balance, and I'm going to depart here and stand on my soapbox as your credit guy, because fund balance is your friend. And everybody thinks that, you know, it's, the solution to problems is, "Well, we'll take that from fund balance, and we'll build it back the next year." I want you to think about the statement I made about cash flow a minute later. Fund balance is a snapshot at June 30. It is near the high point. It's just off the high point of your funds for the year. It is not reflective at all of your actual cash position come the end of October, the first of November. And if you want to see the impact that a, an undernourished fund balance can have, you need to talk to the school districts in the Panhandle right now, who are rushing like mad to try to create borrowing sources, to pay people to help clean up from the hurricane. Worst project, you know, worst timing imaginable, a hurricane in October, November, when cash flows are at their lowest. So, as you're thinking about your budgets and your fund balances, please keep that in mind. So, tax anticipation notes are authorized, authorized under Florida statutes 101113. It's one of three statute items in there that allow for very short-term borrowings. It is the one that allows you to borrow for cash flow purposes. They are short-term instruments used to manage general fund cash flow only, they cannot be used for capital needs. As long as they're outstanding, you cannot borrow for anything else. They are recovered by your first, by your property tax collections that come in, and they cannot go back beyond the end of the year. And they're generally sold in the open market through a competitive sale, if they're of size, like yours is, or if they're for small districts, can be sold directly to banks.
And so, we brought this forward to you back in September, when we were, we, we look at our cash flow, at least on a monthly basis, and saw that there was going, that we were going to be very tight for everything that Jerry had mentioned, and it was Jerry and his team that helped facilitate that competitive sale for us, that got us a tremendous interest rate, and we had by far the most bids on that competitive sale that they saw in the state of Florida at that time, just based on our, on our credit standing and, and good financial standing. So, that was a, a very smooth process. We did use the money, and we have until June 30th to pay that back, which we, really what we're looking at right now is, do we want to pay that off early, or pay it off as we go? Because we actually are earning almost two and a half percent interest on the money that we have invested, and we're only paying about 1.9%. So, we are ahead of the game, we knew we'd be ahead of the game. So, that's, that's where we are in the TANs right now.
In order to borrow a TAN, I should state, just so nobody thinks it's a, an opportunity for arbitrage, which is borrowing money to invest at a spread that you make money off of. You can only borrow tax anticipation notes if you actually can demonstrate that there will be a deficit in your general fund. The opportunity to earn comes from being able to pay it back over a longer period than the cycle in which the tax collections arrive. So, if they're arriving in December, January, February, and we don't have to pay it back till March or June, there's the opportunity there to make up that cost, plus a little bit more. So, certificates of participation are friendly COPS, it is the most common form of school finance in Florida. Up until recently, it was hard to get a referendum passed in Florida. This last election proved that to be maybe changing, when every tax measure on the ballot passed around the state. It was pretty exciting stuff, especially since my first conversation with Lee County Schools about a sales tax bond occurred in 2002. So, we were very excited for you, happy for you, great job. That structure has been validated twice by the Supreme, Supreme Court, once in 1990 in a case brought by Sarasota, and the other in 2007, in a case brought by a Dr. Stran, a veterinarian up in the Panhandle, who tried to kill this as well. We've talked about individual leases versus a manual, annual lease, an individual lease, and we've talked about the fact that it's subject to annual appropriation. So, you can walk away, but you don't have the ability to walk away. They're typically rated one notch below the district's implied general obligation rating, or what some rating agencies would call their issuer rating. What is a general obligation rating? Well, the strongest type of bond that you could issue is if you went to your voters and asked them to give you the authority to secure those bonds by their ad valorem tax collections, regardless of what rate it took to generate the money to pay them off. Those are known as unlimited general obligation bonds, you have a general obligation, your tax base. And so, the rating agencies, when they look at that, say, "Well, if they issued this type of debt, here's what their rating would be." And then, COPS are pegged at one level under that. So, you're legally limited to 75% of your local capital improvement revenues, that mil and a half. Traditionally, practice has said, for credit purposes, don't use more than half of that, 50% of that, which would be three quarters of a mil in your case. Again, you're at .57. There are many districts up around .1, some are up towards one and an eighth, which is the legal max. It's more complex due to the footprint requirements of the lease structure. So, if we go in and, and add in addition to a school that's not a COP school, we will carve out a footprint under that building and place that building on a lease. So that if you failed to appropriate under your master lease, and that was the only thing at that site that was under it, you would lose access to that building. They generally have higher interest rates than either general obligation bonds or sales tax revenue bonds. The strength of the master lease, term anchors here is, is high schools are more valuable than middle schools, that are more valuable than elementary schools. It's easy, if you look at how cohorts population shift over time, right, you would tend to have vacancies in elementary schools before you would have them in high schools. So, credit types like high schools, they like middle schools more than they like elementary schools. Once you get a bunch of them together, it doesn't matter what you put under there, because you've got this critical mass, which is where you are at this point in time. They look at your financial management, the single biggest factor in the rating process, and there are a lot of them, is what do you have control of, and how do you respond to that? You don't control the economy, you don't control what the state does in its funding cycle. What you do control are your fund balances, and they look at that as a critical item in the board's management of its finances. Do they main liquidity, and they do, do they do so over a period of time? Is it consistent? They look at the political environment, they look at everything else going on with your economy, size, risk, resilience. So, now, we come to your sales taxes. They're backed by the proceeds of that sales tax. You obviously have a ten-year tax that you've just passed. You have to state in your ballot language that you're going to use it for debt, which you have done. The sales tax revenues are pledged, but the debt does not, is not secured by the projects themselves. So, the projects are free and clear. If sales tax revenues fell, and you could not make the payments, you would be in default. The obligation wouldn't go away, but you would not be at risk of losing a facility. The maturity dates of the bonds are generally two to three months shorter than the expiration of the tax. Why is that? It's to ensure that there are excess revenues coming in after the bonds are supposed to be paid off, in, in the event that were, there were a shortfall. And typically, they require a debt service reserve fund, meaning that, along with the borrowing, if I'm building a $10 million project, and my maximum debt service in any one year, let's say it's $750,000, along with that $10 million, I'm going to borrow another 107, another 750,000 in that borrowing to place in a reserve fund, that in the event there were shortfall, it would be drawn on to help bridge that gap until revenue is recovered. Okay?
What? Can you explain that again, please?
Sure.
Sorry.
No, no problem at all. It's, it's a bit of a confusing concept. My projects are going to cost, you know, in, my projects are going to cost, well, let's, let's use a live example. Right now, on this page, you see that we're looking at $90 million for high school Triple M, we're looking at $15 million for Lehigh. That would require us to go out, out and issue bonds, projects totaling 105 million. And the maximum debt service coming due in any one year on that amount would be about, just under $12 million, about 11,700,000. And so, we would be required to fund a reserve equal to one of three factors, under 10% of that principal amount, that 105 million dollars. Thank you.
Would you like me to open this for you, Jerry?
Smart aleck. I don't blame you. So, the bondholders would say, "No, set aside for me an amount equal to one year's debt service, so that in the event your revenues ever fell off temporarily, you would have that reserve there that you could dip into to make sure investors were paid their principal and interest, and hopefully, give you time to recover your collections." It's known as a debt service reserve fund. You can fund it in cash, go ahead.
Now, you also see that in commercial credit, large commercial capital projects, they usually have a reserve fund, most creditors require that.
You can fund it with cash, or you can buy a, an insurance policy, what's known as a surety bond, and that would cost you 2% to 3% of that 11 million dollars that you would buy that surety bond that would be drawn on in the event that you had that shortfall. And the decision to do that is simple math. We run the numbers, we say, if we issued, if we cash funded this reserve, and, and put those proceeds in an investment interest, what would it generate for us? Would it pay for itself, or generate a little income? Or would it lose money for us? And if it would lose money, most likely, we'll buy a surety bond. And if it make money for you, we'll put it in the financing, and then, we'll go out and invest it long-term in a contract. Does that, no?
Thank you.
Okay. So, your maximum manual debt service on the issue we're talking about is roughly 14.7 million dollars. That means that the revenues that we think the sales tax will bring in are going to be about four times that. So, it's very, very healthy, very strong from a credit position. And the remaining sales tax revenues each year, approximately 40, 44.3 million dollars for the remainder of the 10 years. This allows you to get these two projects out of the way. We had looked at originally, funding the Lehigh Senior High School additions with a certificate of participation, this was before the sales tax passed, and then, waiting to see what happened before we determined how to do Triple M. But, once it passed, it was obvious to us that we could combine two financings and their associated costs into one, lower your cost of issuance, and achieve a lower interest rate by using sales tax bonds for both than we could by splitting it and using certificates of participation for one, because COPS come at a higher rate than sales tax bonds would. So, that is, that is what is coming before you tonight. Is there another page in here? Okay. So, coming before you tonight, you will have something called a reimbursement resolution. A reimbursement resolution does not obligate you to issue bonds, you will not be obligated to do that until we come back before you, along with your legal team, and present you with resolutions, asking your authorization to go out in the market and sell bonds in an amount not to exceed a specific amount, not to exceed a certain rate. Nothing goes forward till then, but in the meantime, if you pass this resolution, and should you decide to issue tax exempt for it, the IRS allows you to go back in and repay yourself from that future borrowing, anything you've spent from a certain number of days prior to the time that you pass this resolution, up until the time that you close the bond issue. So, you can recover these costs that you've spent on the project. If you don't do that, you cannot. So, while it doesn't obligate you to borrow, it increases your flexibility when and if you do borrow. So, that's what you'll be seeing coming to you tonight.
So, and, and just to build on what Jerry was saying, is, for instance, the Lehigh Senior project, total project costs will be coming before you, we're ready to start breaking ground on that addition. We have, as Jerry had said, we are flush with property tax, ad valorem tax monies, they've been coming in, and they've actually been coming in higher than what we projected. So, we have cash available to start, to start paying for that project ourselves, and part of this reimbursement resolution would, if we, when we go and we start paying for that ourselves, we can reimburse ourselves through the types of financing that we've talked to you about today. This gives us the authority to put that money back into our coffers, if you will.
It's been a real pleasure working with Greg and his team on this, because they've been very, very diligent. We've had multiple conferences about what are the options, what-if scenarios, what are the cost trade-offs, how do we, how do we lower the board's cost as much as possible? How do we create the most efficient plan of finance for this that we can? And we believe that this is, this is the way to do it. Yes, ma'am?
Question, on page 11, when you were talking about the COPS, the, the last bullet says it can limit the ability to finance improvements, and it's typically better to use for additions rather than renovations. How did that affect the decision to do Lehigh Senior?
So, that, Lehigh Senior, the first question to ask when we, in that particular situation with Lehigh, is Lehigh Senior a current school that has COPS financing already on it? And if the answer is yes, then you have to look and see where are the leases? If you look at the blueprint of Lehigh Senior, there's multiple buildings, and if there was COPS financing on it, you can literally draw a line around the buildings that that financing is securing through that lease. Lehigh Senior is not a school that has COPS financing on it, it's free and clear, if you will. So, the addition itself, should we use COPS financing for it? We would literally draw a line around that new addition, both stories, and that would be the least part of that COPS financing for Lehigh Senior. The other part of the school would not be under that lease. And so, any other school that, you know, if we do any significant additions to, that's an option to us, and those are the questions that we have to ask. Is there financing already on that facility? Yes or no? And then, what particular parts of that facility are within that lease? And most of the time, the whole school will be spoken for.
See, that's a really good explanation of that, and let's take it down and make it a little bit more granular, as I unfortunately am want to do from time to time. In terms of the specific addition versus renovation, let's say it was an existing two-story building there, and the second floor was in really bad shape, and we wanted to go in and renovate that second floor and spend money on it. Well, we would not want to use COP proceeds for that, because then, we would have to give up that building, that two-story building, we'd have to give up a leasehold interest in that, and could have the risk of losing it if you ever not appropriated it. But, you have a lot of equity in that building, you own it, you're only renovating a portion of it. When you're building the whole thing new, that's a different trade-off in saying, "Well, gee, I've got X amount of equity in here, and I would lose that if I walked away." So, that's that trade-off on that, on that new, new building versus a renovated building.
So, once you walk away from a COP, it's, there's no going back on that, is what you're saying?
That, that is what I'm saying. The key difference between a bond and a COP is, well, there are a couple of them, but one of them is that a bond legally survives throughout its life to its final maturity. You may not be able to pay for it, it may be in default. It may be in default, but the obligation is always there. In a certificate of participation, it's secured only by that stream of lease revenues and only as long as the lesssee renews and appropriates that lease each year. So if you fail to renew the lease, the obligation to the bondholder, to the certificate holder expires, you walk away. What you do is give back the facilities. They are left, their trustee is left with the facilities, trying to relet them or trying to sell them, but they have no claim on any future revenue from you. Okay? That is the fundamental difference between a bond. At that point that you choose not to renew, it is over and there is no recovery at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a very good question.
Questions, comments?
I thank you. That, I mean, you've really made it clear. I really appreciate it and look forward to meeting with you.
Now you know why we offer you the follow-up. Bring more nodos.
Nodos. All right. Are we on time? I think we're on time, too.
No, I think you had 10 minutes left. 3:21 was your cutoff.
Well, all right. Good job.
That's about three songs.
Three songs? Well, we do have a Carol off coming up on Friday.
You do not want that from me. You'd probably be hiring a new advisor.
And I'm hopeful that all seven of you will be participating on Friday.
Well, that's right.
We're, we're videoing her. She's coming in.
That's a challenge, by the way.
If I'm here, my mother will disown me.
And we can't have families breaking up. We won't break up families for this song.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Pruitt envisioning 2030 job study.
Good afternoon. We have Will Rothenberg, who is the Director of Compensation and Labor Relations with me here on this afternoon. So we're going to go from the exciting conversation of finance to job descriptions. And I'm not as entertaining as Greg, so I, I don't have any song and dance or joke. So I apologize for that in advance. What we're sharing with you this afternoon is what I'll call another update into our journey of getting through all of the job descriptions and aligning them and bringing them up to date, putting them in the framework, that whole process that we started about four years ago, which required the review and taking action on over 800 job descriptions. And what that has led to, and you're going to see there's, we've brought you some of the job study informations previously, and even after today, you'll continue to see some other things that will move forward. But you're seeing the bulk of this four-year journey that will come before you at the, not tonight, but at the next board meeting. And basically, if you look at that document, you can see that we have it segmented out by employee group. And so I just want to talk a little bit about the, the why before I get into the details of, of the work that was done relative to that. Our long-term goal, which is what aligns with 2030, is to have a system of job descriptions that will do a variety of things. One is that we will have a comprehensive database that will allow us to do evaluations, searches, look at things by having a database of comprehensive knowledge, skills and abilities and competencies that people have. It will also create the foundation for us for succession planning because I may have a job available in human resources and the competencies I need for that job are also competencies that would be for a job that is in finance that I may not be aware of as a hiring manager. So by being able to search, not only through the job descriptions, but also eventually employee profiles, it will make us a lot more robust as we begin to look at filling positions in the future. So that's kind of the why, is to really create that solid foundation. And not to mention that we had some job descriptions that, you know, hadn't been looked at since There was a yeoman's effort when Dr. Atkins had this position, but due to that thing, what I call resources and level of service, he was kind of cut short in being able to complete that work. So this is our pickup of that. And so we're, do a variety of things. You'll see there the word align and then you'll see there, so what we're looking at is again, making sure that all the jobs are put in that framework. We're making sure that we're using a consistent title, for example. Some title said Director of such-and-such. Other one said such-and-such comma director, right? So it's just that part about, for those of us that are kind of OCD, that everything looks the same and it's set up in a very systematic way. The other work that was done is really looking at the consistency across different job types. So for example, if it's a similar job, are those minimum requirements, are they somewhat similar? So that we're not showing a big disparity if you're a supervisor here versus a supervisor there. Do I need a master's degree to be this supervisor and the high school diploma to be this supervisor? So just really working through all of that for consistency. A lot of legwork was done, looking at other districts, looking at other job descriptions, you know, trying to give some benchmark, looking at that to make sure that we're keeping up with what's going on, I guess, out there in the world. So that's kind of the overview and I really, the rest of it, just wanted to find out what are the questions that you have? I, I think the document was pretty comprehensive. You know, all of this is governed by Board Policy 5.021 and, which illustrates what we're allowed to do with and without board approval. But again, we wanted to bring it all before you because it is very comprehensive. It's, it's, you know, the, the bulk of the culmination of the, of the four years of creating that foundation.
On page three, where it says job description deletion, those were just deleted altogether? They, were they changed? And titles changed? If you changed the title, did you just delete it and start all over again or?
So those, those positions were positions that we had on file that were not active. There's a, a number of positions that, as Dr. Pruitt said, hadn't been looked at in a number of years. And so they're positions that when we looked at what had been advertised over the past several years, what had had an employee in the position over the past several years, they, they kind of came up blank. So we sent a couple of different lists out to all of the current chiefs for review to see how those positions fit into their organizational charts. And, and those are the positions that came back as they're out of date. Another position has been created to replace them or, or they're otherwise not useful to the district at this time.
I was going to say, a good example would be if you look where it says Coordinator, Personnel Services, there is no Personnel Services anymore.
Right.
Okay? So, you know, it's Human Resources or Staffing and Talent Management or, you know, so a lot of it is just that, they're just job descriptions that we're not using anymore.
I'm looking at the one, the Director of Construction and Facilities. And with, you know, the construction that we're doing and looking to do, are some of those duties that were in there just rolled into or did you find that someone is already doing?
It, there's a different job description. It's a, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I just have one question looking forward, you know, as we're saying envisioning 2030. For instance, on here is Assistant Director Student Services. So we don't have what's called student services anymore, but as time goes on and things change and trends move, is there a part of the plan to continue to do that and be in tune with the rest of the market and other districts?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The ongoing work will be a rotation of department, division job studies that will look at all of that information. It will look at compensation so that we can continue to be competitive in making sure in the different areas because remember, we're, we talked for years now about moving away from, you know, everybody gets a 2% raise, but rather you're looking at the market, you're looking at performance, you're looking at different pieces. And so yes, that would also include looking at what are the best practices, what are other districts doing relative to that? So our hope and goal is that, again, there'll be a schedule set up so we know that every third year, you know, the Finance Division and we'll, we'll do that job study and review all of that information. This is all the, really the work of one person, so it will definitely have to be a rotating schedule relative to that to, to look at it all.
Thank you. I guess one, one of the things that I was trying to coordinate is the existing, the existing organizational chart and the different, the different titles. And I know that if you go back five years ago, there were all different titles. So, okay, so at the very top level, under the superintendent, we would have, okay, so the chief level, chief and executive director would be the very top tier as, in, in the new plan, is that right?
Currently, the organizational chart is the chiefs.
Right.
And then the next level is executive directors.
Okay.
And then the next level is directors.
Director. And then under that, assistant director?
Assistant directors. And then there's, then from there, then you go to coordinators.
Okay. So one of the things you're doing is keeping all of that consistent.
Correct.
Okay. And then I also heard you say that you're looking at, so for instance, if you have a director in a particular area, an assistant director would have just a little less of the qualifications and then could work into the number of years and?
That's, and that's part of the streamlining and looking at the requirements and the consistency of that.
Okay, good. And that, that makes a lot of sense. As I was going through it, the only one that I had a question about was, it looks like all of the, where is it? All of the assistant directors would have master's degree except in maintenance. Is that, and that said bachelors, is that right?
I'm not sure, specific to an individual position, but I do know that there was some conversation around where work experience replaces the, like formal education, the same thing with professional licensure or certification. And so we've begun to develop what are kind of appropriate variances from that. Because there are positions where, you know, you can come straight out of college and it, it's not the same as someone who's, who's done that job for seven years and knows the ins and outs better than, than someone who has just studied the, you know?
Okay, yeah. And I was wondering about that. I thought that that probably was what made that decision on that particular one. And then I would imagine that the next level up, that person would have to have a master's degree, just?
Again, I, I don't know the specifics of each one, but we could certainly review any of the particulars that you have to, to let you know that. Some of it also has to do while keeping within the variance of consistency of the job title, but also looking at the industry standard. I think the other important point that I haven't, that I did not bring up is that we are currently working on adding an additional salary schedule because there is, what we find across the state for a best practice is an assistant director in curriculum is, you know, an administrator that, that deals with the, you know, the, the schoolwork, if you will, and the academic achievement, where we have some assistant director positions that are more what we would call a non-exempt sort of administrative position. So we're really trying to make sure that we align that. So you'll see as that comes forward within probably the next six months to go effective for next school year, that'll, that'll also, I think, align some of that.
Okay, yeah. Cause that, that makes, that makes sense, but I just wanted to, and one other, I, I just wanted to make this comment at this, at this point. Moving forward on this operational chart that appears on the website, it might be a good idea to be able to click on the position and then go to the name and the description.
It's funny, we did talk about that.
Did you?
Yeah, well, we were waiting for the transition to the new website before we started making some of those enhancements. Cause it just helped. We're such a big district, you don't know who somebody is. So it'd be helpful if you could go do that and get a picture.
Yeah, and it would go not only to the name, but it would go to the description. And that would be so helpful for people trying to, well, people like me that are looking, well, who does exactly this? And, and also for the general public looking at this and, okay, well, is this the person that I might want to reach out to? So just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I'll say that I think this is the most exciting part of Envision 2030 for me. Honestly, when we had that workshop and Mr. Davis talked about the capacity that we're going to need in our database in order to be able to internally identify candidates for openings, that to me is just really exciting, which makes me probably a loser, but I just think that, and I've told you repeatedly, Dr. Pruitt, that you're reliant on data instead of the more touchy-feely side of human resources. I love that. I love that you rely on that. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Great. Next, we have Mr. Mora with a capital project update. And Mr.?
Rickinbacher.
Rickinbacher.
Dr. Atkins, happy holidays to all of you. It's with great enthusiasm that I joined Scott Rickinbacher here today to provide you with our monthly capital projects update. I also want to recognize our design partners that are here in the audience this afternoon in support of us. It's RG Architects. They are the firm that we have engaged with on the Lehigh Senior High School project. You know, this is a, the Lehigh Senior High School addition and renovation is really a landmark project for the school district of Lee County. And to the new board members who might not have been familiar with the processes that we employed before with these types of capital projects, this is really a big change for us in how we operate and how we do business. For those who don't know, the former process saw folks here on staff develop a cost estimate for projects, seek approval from the school board, even prior to engaging with design professionals, construction managers or building officials. We were basically taking a stab at it. So I'm very happy to say that we've changed dramatically. The new process, as you probably already know, is a comprehensive pre-construction phased approach, which really is, the linchpin is the synergistic partnership of district staff like Scott and myself with the design partners, RG Architects, Cristel Construction on this particular project and the building official, to really work together to realize the greatest efficient and most economical approach to constructing a, a building or an addition. So in this process, you have listened to Scott and I give you updates periodically during this construct, pre-construction process. This is our third estimate we're bringing in front of you. So you can rest assured that a lot of work has gone into this, that all the value engineering we could get out of this project has been made, that we've worked with the constituents in our design charrettes to ensure that what we're designing and what we will build will, will address the educational needs for our students in Lehigh for a long time coming. So today, we're really excited because we're bringing you something called the, the GMP. And I will allow Scott to get into a little bit of that, but I think it's also a good opportunity for us to explain some of the things that you're seeing on the backup sheets that you provided for the budget for this, this project. Because you'll see words such as GMP, Total Project Cost. It's really important to understand what those are. It's really important to understand what those are and what the components of those estimates and budgets are. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Dotick. The slide you're presently looking at and we're presenting today is the GMP, guaranteed maximum price, which the construction manager has solicited bids for and come forward with us to be part of the total project cost, which is what the board approves for us to get funding and move forward with the contract and superintendent execute all documents. The GMP is actually less. When we first came and briefed you folks and did a presentation, we had an estimate of about a little over $11 million. So the actual construction GMP has come in substantially less than that, at $10,581. The total project cost, if you have a chance to look at the backup sheet with the board agenda, is a sheet that we make up for both the Phase 1, which was the pre-construction dollars the board approved for us to engage with our design professionals and our construction manager throughout this journey up to now. And we also do one for the total project cost, which incorporates that money. So on the top of the backup sheet, what you will see is $1.184 million. That was the Phase 1 money that the board had approved. We have to report that in the total project cost coming before you for the action meeting tonight. That becomes part of the $13 million in its entirety. Right now, we anticipate a construction start on January 9th. They will be mobilizing over the Christmas break with some fencing, cones, and things of that nature. But I'd like to go over the total project cost estimate sheet, and if you have any questions you'd like to ask specific to that. You can see that the construction management fee, there's your GMP when you look at the 5.1 associated with new construction. We also have an owner contingency line. That is a owner contingency owned pot of expenditure. The construction project itself...
Can I stop you? We don't have...
We don't have...
Attached to tonight's meeting agenda, I can tell you which number it is.
Going there.
We should go over to tonight's meeting?
Yeah, it's I-9.
Bingo. Bingo.
Much better, thank you, sorry.
No worries, I didn't realize you didn't have it, I apologize.
No, we have it, but just in a different spot, no biggie.
So ultimately, what you'll see is the Phase 1 money incorporated engaging with the design professionals and the CMAR to get us to this point. The actual GMP, which is the bid that was put out to the public and culminated by the construction manager at risk, is $10.58 million. You'll see I have an owner contingency, that is specific to us. Inside the GMP, there is a 2% contingency as well, that is a shared contingency and has to have our approval.
So it's a total 7% contingency?
No, 5% total, and that's been our typical, 2% inside the GMP and 3% outside the GMP that is only authorized by us, the district. That makes sense. In addition to that, you'll see the ancillary costs, and that's HVAC testing and commissioning required by code, our building official, that's the code, the building inspectors that come out, that's the cost in Phase 2 for that individual, any anticipated surveys, and obviously the outside auditor. We have to put money in there to bring these to an outside auditor to bring forward.
What is other ancillary costs?
Anything that comes up that is unexpected, it could be a south water management permit issue where we need some more funding to support that, it could be a specialty individual that we have to engage with to provide a service that was an unknown. Then we come into FFNE at the bottom of the page, that is the supported documents, and we received these from staff as to their values they'd need to complete the project. And we arrive at the total project cost, which we'll be bringing forward to the action meeting tonight of $13.086 million.
Thank you.
I have some of my, so $13.086, if they come to us in February and say it's going to be $15.086, what's our answer?
We have a competitive bid, the subcontracts will be engaged as soon as we engage the contract with the CMAR, and they're obligated with a bond to build a job for that based on the design and the bids.
So this is a true GMP contract?
Absolutely.
Because we've had these before, like Benita, where we actually had to pay the overage, but this is a true GMP?
The problem you had before, you had an estimate.
Right.
With no formal backup. Here, you actually have the hard bid, public advertised GMP.
Okay, and then I remember the, and Dr. Atkins and I talked about this a little bit earlier, I remember there being concern with the contingency being at 5% with Benita Springs High School. And I'm kind of thinking through this as you're presenting to me, and I'm wondering whether 5% is appropriate under these circumstances since we do have a GMP, whereas last time we didn't have a true GMP.
Well, what we had, actually on Benita Springs High School, there's a couple of different issues in there, but generically speaking, we had a 2% contingency inside the GMP from the construction manager at risk there. We actually returned, I believe, last month portions of that contingency that was unused. So that was, outside of that, the 3% that I spoke to you about, owner contingency that we have in this particular project for Lehigh, I only had less than a percent at Benita Springs High School project because they used the remainder to fund the portables behind Astero High School. So that, in the initial concepts, that funding wasn't there, so that 3% that I say is my division's contingency had been expended to support the portable use.
Okay.
5% has been a typical number that we've used since I've been here in '05, and it seems to serve the purpose.
You may have said this before, and I missed it, on the first slide where you mentioned the GMP was $10,000, I mean $10,581, et cetera, and the total, the TPC is $13,000. The difference between those two?
$13 million. Well, if you look at, if you're looking at that backup sheet, the $10 million is the actual contract I engage with, with the CMAR. That's the cost, the hard construction cost. Everything outside of that, if you go above it, the 1.184, that was money to get to this point, engaging, fully engaging with the architectural design, and then very partially engaging with the construction manager to sit in our meetings and provide the design charrette, as well as the building official. Then we have all of the FFNE at the bottom of the page, that makes up the rest, and the ancillary is just those things outside of the construction manager's contract that I have to engage, like auditing, any, the other ancillary costs, the survey and assessments costs, those are the payments that we make for permitting for local officials in Lee County for drawing review and so forth.
Now, Scott says FFNE, I want to make sure everybody understands what that is. It's furniture fixtures and equipment, it's the goods that we outfit the school with. So we build a space, we need to put desks in there, chairs, computers, technologies included in that, security, we're adding security to this building, we're doing a single-point entry there. So there's some other features and upgrades that are not in the construction cost, but they're in other ancillary costs.
So the GMP is basically just the construction cost?
Hard construction cost, yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Okay. Curiosity question, what, which of these numbers do we use in determining the per-student station cost?
That's a great question, and, you know, I just returned with Dawn from a facility planners' meeting, we talked about that very topic, the state has redefined how we calculate that. So there's certain things that we can take out of this project cost to get to the student station count. Security can now be removed from that, cameras can be taken out of that, single-point entry could be taken out of that, site development costs can be taken out of that. So they really revise what the components are for total project cost in which, how they calculate student station costs. But I will tell you that even with all those things removed, looking at the projects that we've built in the past, it's going to be really difficult and challenging for us to meet those minimum requirements, and a lot of the other partnering districts shared the same with us. So we did talk about some innovative and creative ways to try to meet that cost that I'd love to brief you all on at some later meeting.
So the state tells us how to calculate it. So truly, when I'm comparing per-student station costs here to something up in Bay County, for example, that is a true comparison?
Yeah, we actually have to report the costs, they have a form, and it's pretty consistent on what the information they want from us. Our budget department, actually, I believe submits that on our behalf, using all of the finances that come out of the project.
And then when you talk about meeting the per-student station minimums, you're talking about the amount the state is allowing us to spend per-student station when we build, right?
Yeah, we had that, that's an interesting question, because we had that topic come up in our meeting, and a lot of us wondered, well, what would happen to us if we didn't meet those thresholds? Are the project police going to come get us? I don't exactly know, but if you don't meet them, I know they have some things in statute, Mr. Dotick might be able to look them up, they actually put you on a program in which the state has some oversight of your future projects and a little bit more participation in the approval process. So I don't think we want to get into that with them, but our team is up for the challenge in looking at ways that we can creatively and legally meet the requirements, and I think we'll come up with some really good ideas.
But you found some flexibility, didn't you, in the law with regard to the size of classrooms and that kind of thing with locally sourced dollars?
Yeah, there is some wiggle room, although, you know, we've worked with our legal staff to determine whether or not those are the ways that we want to go, but there does seem to be some room for us to work within. You know, other partnering districts are doing things such as in their classrooms, they're taking out all the casework. So the square footage of the classroom, they can maximize what they're doing in there, and they're putting in movable closets and movable bureaus and those type of things, filing cabinets, so not part of the built environment, so they're getting around it that way. A lot of them are phasing their projects, so they're building the school facility as Phase 1, and it's a separate project from the athletic facility, so they're using different types of funding, and the student, the per-student station costs are calculated differently. So we're out there listening and seeing how other districts are creatively working with that new regulation.
Excellent. Other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, Ms. Patrico, we do have a fly-through that I'd like to show that RG Architects put together, and also they brought in two boards here in the back of the boardroom. And Scott, myself, and the design team will be around after this meeting if you have any questions that you didn't ask here at the dais. So I'm going to play this real quick, and as I'm letting that play, I will share with you the scope of work here, just to repeat, is 450 student stations addition, that's the addition building you're going to see there on the right. So 415 students in that particular building, and then we're renovating the existing space and adding, adding 306 more student stations. So this project is adding 721 student stations to Lehigh Senior High School. The total enrollment in that school, or seat capacity in that school will be 2,545 students. Now, I shared that with you because we're actually taking care of two issues in the E-zone. One, the number of students in portables, it has the most portables in our district. So we're in effect taking all of the students out of the portables and putting them into the building, which is a great thing. And we're also addressing the growth that we have out there. So with this addition and with MMM coming in the next couple of years, we will really have addressed those capacity issues that we're experiencing now, so. And the other addition on this is the ROTC program, and really taking into account the growing program that we have there. So we've added some features on this addition that I think that the students will really enjoy.
The per-student station cost for that 721 that was added, how did we fare with that?
Yeah, that, so when you start, as Ms. Patrico had mentioned before, when you start comparing that cost with other schools and other projects, you've got to be very careful because the remodeling of a building obviously is a lot cheaper than actually building a new hard facility. So we can compute the 415 student station addition cost per student station, and you'll find that that's, and I didn't bring any comparisons to additions across the state right this moment, but that actually compares pretty favorably to what we see other districts doing. And of course, the remodel is probably the cheapest way that we can get student stations, which it kind of suggests that we should be looking for opportunities in our current facilities in which we can renovate and add more stations without building new buildings.
Yes. So this might be a question from Mr. Blerton, we would not have been able to finance this with a COP, or would we have had to separate the addition from the renovation for a COP?
We, absolutely, we could finance it with COPs financing, but it really comes down to is, based on everything that we talked about earlier before this presentation, is does that make the most sense?
How do you do renovation of an existing facility?
So this is, this is a completely brand-new addition, and so this addition itself, it is attached to the main, the main building on campus, but the COPs financing, we would literally, part of that lease program, draw a line around that addition, and it is that addition only that would be part of that COPs financing.
So then we're not renovating an existing part of the...
Correct. And that was a question, actually, why, so, but, so that is a great question. So the other areas within the main facility that we're, you know, adding space, because there is not financing available, or there is not, this school does not have any financing existing on it, it is an opportunity that we could, if it made sense, which it doesn't, draw lines around the office, you know, space, and that becomes part of the lease, but then that's one small compartment, if you will, or room or space in that school. So the COPs financing, you know, now that the sales tax has passed and what we have available and the flexibility that some of the other options that we have, may make more sense to go a different route than COPs financing for this addition. Because it's a, it's a smaller project from, you know, the GMP and total project cost that you heard, you know, 13 and a half million versus, you know, 75, 80, 90, 100 million for a brand-new school, we have a lot more flexibility and other options available to us for it.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Vaughn?
So moving forward, will all the new builds of all the new schools have kind of a contingency plan of where a future addition might go? Could you, yes?
That's, I appreciate you bringing that up, because yes, it is. On high school, MMM, we specifically designed that school so that we can expand up to 500 student stations. So we're building in the infrastructure and preserving the property that we can expand on to. So, great question. The other thing we're doing with all of our new builds is also looking to accommodate student drop-off on our property instead of the municipal roadways. That's a growing challenge at some of our older schools, so you'll notice in all of our new designs that we have long approaches to parent drop-off. So we keep those cars off the municipal roadways, and you guys don't get those calls from those residents.
Okay, so you mentioned about the new schools are built with a thought in mind of doing additions. The possibilities, are you looking at the existing buildings and doing, do we have the space, do we have the land to do add-ons rather than new buildings?
Right, yeah, we've done quite a bit of assessment of our current facilities and the properties that we have available, and identifying those that could be expanded on. We also have to assess whether or not the student capacity is needed in those areas, obviously, and how that implicates transportation. Part of that, and I know I've shared with some, but not all, and Dr. Atkins has heard this, our facilities planning folks, which is an office of one, Don Huff, but it will be a team putting together a comprehensive facilities master plan. So that's going to identify our needs further out than the five-year plan that we're required by FDOE to submit. We're looking 10, 15 years out, and we're considering everything, including growth, including infrastructure, as roads change here, as development orders are approved. We're working with academic services to determine what instruction looks like 10, 15 years out, so we're designing spaces to meet that need, and obviously looking at ways that we can build flexible learning spaces so that if programs change, if instruction changes, we can pivot and use what we have the best we can. So we anticipate working collaboratively with our team as well as the municipalities, utilities, in developing a very comprehensive plan that you all will have as a guideline to us as staff to what we're going to be doing well into the future.
Thank you.
Think of it as the Envision 2030 for the facilities, folks.
Great, so before we let you go, does anybody have any questions on the change-order memo?
I will point out, on the change-order report, you'll see a lot of the lines there are actually the return of unused contingency from other projects. So more often than not, contingency is not used, it's typically returned to the district, but it is a risk management piece.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we take cards for public comment during briefing?
No.
No? So is there anybody in the public that wants to address the board?
Come on out?
Please.
Mr. Dotick, could you address the...
Sure, the subject of comment during a briefing meeting is limited to those items on the agenda. Three minutes is the time period.
Thank you.
I have a parliamentary inquiry in regards to the board, and I request that the timekeeper would stop the clock while I ask the question.
That's not...
Under Robert Rules of Border?
Not appropriate, we don't...
Not appropriate? Not appropriate?
Converse during public comment.
I made a Robert Rules of Order parliamentary inquiry.
You're not a member of the...
Okay, it's only for you all?
Yeah.
All right, good. Today on the agenda, you are going to approve...
You are. State name.
Go ahead.
Just identify yourself.
Your name, please, for the record.
You know who I am, and I'm not going to identify myself.
Well, the board policy requires you to, sir.
Right, but we talked about the Constitution before, and am I going to be for...
No, I'm just going to pause it now, though, because I'm talking. The board policy and the board can have time, manner, and place restrictions in a limited public forum, and one of the rules is that you identify yourself, so if you're not willing to do that, then...
For myself, but here's the charge, okay? And I present that to the chairman. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other member of the public wish to address the board? Okay, now we have board member comments. I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan.
Okay, so, I attended the Horizon Council Business Issues Task Force. We previewed a draft of a report by that task force to the Horizon Council regarding findings and recommendations regarding the 2018 attainable housing in Lee County Report of 11 Recommendations. The task force agreed to highlight and prioritize four recommendations for the Horizon Council. One is to commence intergovernmental and inter-agency working group to proceed with the expansion of the Community Land Trust, a private nonprofit corporation that acquires and holds, excuse me, holds title to land and manages the ground leases on that property for the benefit of the community. Two, to change the impact fee burden for attainable housing projects, to assess fees on a per-square-foot basis instead of a per-unit basis, and establish an impact fee deferral program to reduce the additional costs associated with development. And three, to develop an action plan for the 15, for the 15 federal opportunity zones designated by Governor Scott in Lee County. And then, Han Duff and I advised the group that Recommendation 11, which is to pursue development of school district-owned land, is already under consideration by the school district, and as our work as a school district proceeds, the council will be advised regarding our progress and any intergovernmental issues that may require adjudication. So, that was that meeting. And then, curriculum advisory. Dr. Creel offered an overview of areas and projects for which curriculum committee input would be valuable as a group. The committee members were also asked to join working groups for some of the project areas based on their personal interest. The committee decided to start with a new academic services initiative, which is, in terms of their work, which is designed to tackle problems of older students failing to acquire the credits necessary to advance to high school. So, the committee members asked the staff liaisons to provide data from the four middle schools participating in the pilot and to present the plan and process for its implementation at the next meeting. Also, members were offered the opportunity to do learning walks with staff, and it was the first time I had really heard about learning walks, which is, it's a walk-around that staff does in schools, and they do walk-arounds every week at every level. You are welcome to do a walk-around, and it was mentioned earlier in the presentation as a way of observing whether or not schools, classrooms, teachers are in compliance with expectations regarding our academic program, and so I, I plan to sign up, and I encourage you to do so as well. And then, the other thing I attended was student advisory. It was a good presentation by Richard Parfit, and led to some good discussion, I thought, from, or input from students, their opinion on how safe they felt in school, and they asked some good questions, and so I thought it was a terrific meeting, and that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Oh, okay. Cut me off guard. Okay, I...
Can I have some things up a little?
Thank you, Mrs. Patrica. Okay, so, very briefly, thank you for your comments on student advisory. It was a very good meeting, and I was extremely interested in the comments and the questions that the students posed to Mr. Parfit, and it ended up being a longer presentation because of their level of interest, and thanks to the other board members who attended the student advisory, too. I think it's really critical that board members take an opportunity to attend when they can, because hearing the questions and the comments from the students directly can't be replaced by, you know, my report. I also attended the Insurance Task Force meeting, and I'm happy to be a part of that for this year. Some of the interesting things were that there's been an increase in big claims in our district recently, and I don't know that we're sure if that is due to our growth or to, you know, the stress level, or just the fact that some people are not taking advantage of our wellness program, which really has been so beneficial and offers many opportunities for staff members to keep themselves healthy. There'll be a, a new plan, 7419 will be coming up this coming year, and there'll be a new vendor, and then also open enrollment opportunities will be on the new website so that people can get all the details that they need and get questions answered. So, I think that there'll be some increases in offerings from the wellness program, and I had attended a tour of the gym and the new classroom with Heather Parker, and I really am impressed with the work that they're doing and the, the opportunity that it affords to our staff members to really work on their health and wellness. And I also attended the North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts Pilot Stage Production of Moana, which they were invited to participate in by Disney, and it was incredible, especially the water scene, those dancers were amazing. So, I talked to the principal afterwards, and we were discussing their school grade, which is one point from an A, even though they are spending a lot of time working on nine productions during the school year. So, I was put in mind of the fact that research shows that cross lateral exercises and movement really enhances kids' ability to have the self-confidence and the competency to succeed better academically, so I'm really going to continue to support the arts. And now, they have been invited by Disney to do another pilot of Newsies, so I'm really proud of the work they're doing there. And I had an opportunity to serve breakfast at Transportation West, and I wanted to compliment not only our bus drivers, because I feel like I don't think I would get into a bus and drive it on the road, much less a bus with 40 or 50 kids in it, and they were the happiest group of people I've seen in a long time, and I just wanted to do a shout-out to Mr. Parnell, because he really has a wonderful rapport with his, with his drivers. And it's an honor to serve with our new members, and that's it for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Vaughn.
Well, I'd like to start out by saying, next week, I will be starting my Citizens Advisory Committee duties, taking over for Curriculum Advisory Committee, and so I don't really have a report on that yet. I have been able to go out and do a tour of the maintenance facility, which I really enjoyed. It's, it's one thing to sit down and to meet the, the people that run that department, but until you really get out there and see, you know, be able to visualize what, what all goes on, it's, it's just so much more rewarding to see it. I also did a tour out in the bus barn on Six Mile Cypress. That was very enlightening. I passed that area, I live nearby, and I pass that area all the time and see buses coming and going, but it's, again, quite an enlightening experience to do, to do that tour. I have started touring some, some schools. I did do a tour of Cypress Lake Middle School, and that is one of the schools that is on the short list for, actually, for a teardown. I, I put it early on my list because I wanted to see, well, why is this going to be torn down? It did take very long to see the multiplicity of issues in terms of the facility. Now, I say in terms of the facility because it's, it's an A school, the teachers that I talked with all seemed really happy, there's not a big turnover rate at that school, and they do everything that they can to get rid of the industrial color walls and put up their unique purple. They even had a purple and gold beautiful Christmas tree in, in the front office. Other than that, thank you to the presenters today. Very thankful for all the work that you put in in devising these programs, coming up with these new things, but especially in coming out with these great presentations, because it really clarifies many of these things, and to be able to ask questions is rewarding and educational for me as a new board member, and that's it.
Great, thanks. Ms. Giovanelli?
I just want to wish the staff and everyone Merry Christmas, and I went to the student advisory meeting, too, and I love the kids, so, but I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and see you in the new year. I do have a good of the order, but I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
I have several things that I've been involved with. Some of them I'm saving for the meeting this evening, because some of the students hopefully will be attending the meeting. The, look at my notes here. Several of us attended the League of Women Voters Meeting last Saturday, and it was a very good meeting. I, I do have, I guess, a concern coming out of that, and I've talked with Dr. Carlin and Lauren Stillwell about it, basically that when we are out in the public, that we have a, a common focus, a common statement, and in other words, if there were two or three things that we make sure that we say, and everyone is going to present, of course, in their own way with their own personality, but I will talk about that later as far as us getting together and having at least a common, agreed-upon strategy and talking points, and we can talk about that later on. I attended the Rotary All-Star Event with Ms. Patrica, it was very nice, and I didn't go to the game, it was a little bit cold, but it was a very nice event, a great speaker, and got to meet a lot of people in the community. I also went to the Transportation Breakfast at West and at Six Mile, and it's just amazing to see how many people work in all of our facilities and, that are transporting and taking care of our children every day. So, that's pretty much it for now, and I also would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. It's not going to be here this evening. Have a wonderful, safe, and blessed holiday, everyone.
Thanks. Ms. Jordan?
Okay, well, I, I think we're all running the same circuit, and so, yes, I've had the opportunity to go to the student advisory, which was wonderful, and listen to those children and their hearts and what they have to share with us is really fabulous. I also went with Ms. Giovanelli.
Yeah.
We went to Cypress Lake, and that...
Special Olympics.
Special Olympics was just really amazing, and to speak to those children who are the mentors and paired with those kids just was very, very emotional, and, and they said they do it because of their heart, it makes them feel good, and when you're listening to young people speak like that, you know, it's a good thing. And also, I did my first EDAC meeting last night, and we spoke a lot, Dr. Atkins was one of the speakers there, he was the speaker there, and it was a lot about the Rs, again, you know, the respect, making sure that these children are respecting their teachers, and, you know, where do we take it from there? So, that was my first meeting. Next meeting, they're just want to have like a roundtable discussion so they actually can speak about what they want to do, because they have not yet done that yet. Let's see, oh, I also was able to feed, went to the bus barn out west, and that was fabulous. I could not believe what they do in those rooms. I mean, it's just amazing when you look at this room full of, not full of a whole lot of people, but they're actually making sure that all of our children are being taken where they need to go, and it's just fabulous. They invited me to go at 4:30 in the morning with them, I'm going to take them up on that. I don't know what day, but I will be there to help them or to watch them, but I don't want to really waste anybody's time, it's just that, you know, it's been really great opportunity to, we're all learning still, and I really appreciate you all that are helping us to learn and to keep all the knowledge that you have, sharing that with us. It's really appreciative, and everyone, have a Merry Christmas, and I thank you.
So, new board members are fun, because they're so excited about everything they're doing.
I am.
You guys are fun. Although, I would say that your description as a nice event, I don't remember exactly what your words were, Ms. Gittens, about Rotary South, Rotary South was awesome. It was like off the hook, I cannot believe, South Fort Myers Rotary Club, when they do events, they do them big and they do them well.
And the speaker.
And every school was represented, and every coach was there, and there was an administrator from every school, and that's like a real...
That's great.
Those kids are looking forward to that ring for four years, and when they get it, I hate being on stage, but for that, to be up there and to shake their hands and to have a word or two with them, that's, that's what we're here for, and that was pretty awesome. As we were discussing our financing situation today, I was reminded of the crisis that we were facing as we went out and asked for the half penny sales tax, because .59 mil is what we're using right now to pay down debt, and the tremendous increase in that, if we would have had to have borrowed long-term for new construction, would have put us in a really, really, really scary situation in terms of maintaining the buildings we already have in place. So, I know that that's like a mantra that is kind of, you know, the source of nightmares for us, because we had to say it so often, but that really drove home today how thankful I am to this community for saying yes and giving us the revenue that we need to have appropriate learning environments for students. And finally, I want to wish everybody happy holidays, especially law enforcement and men and women overseas, because frequently they can't spend time with their families, and if we could keep in mind our students and families who, this isn't necessarily a happy holiday, because they're missing loved ones.
Mr. Dotig, do you have any comments or reports?
Well, I just want to clarify what happened during public comment a little bit. Our board policy does, at the action meeting, require an individual to identify themselves, usually by filling out a card, or the board chair asks them to identify themselves. The briefing meeting, the policy regarding briefing meetings doesn't necessarily specify that, however, the board has traditionally asked an individual to identify who they are, so the board can communicate with that individual at a later time. So, I just wanted to clarify that point for you, and that's all I have.
Dr. Atkins?
I don't have any comments at this time, thanks.
Okay, I have a good of the order item. Ms. Giovanelli, has anyone else have good of the order? Ms. Morgan, why don't we start with you, and we'll work our way down?
Okay, I, I was going to bring this up, and we discussed the evaluation of the board attorney, and it's really for the benefit of the new board members. The last time we had a conversation regarding the board attorney, we made some very specific asks of the board attorney, and I just want to get it on record with, with the new board. One has to do with a cost-benefit analysis of Neola, and Neola is a firm that does generic Florida school board policy writing, and, and we had the conversation that when Mr. Martin wanted to do it, but it required an enormous amount of staff time, so we had asked Mr. Dotig do that, and also asked that there be a schedule for board manual review. When I was looking at the board policy... When I was looking at the board policy, there are a number of policies that appear not to have been looked at since 1991. And yet I know, in the last three years, we have done the entire board policy manual. So we need to go back and indicate when a policy was reviewed, even if it was not updated at that time. But I'm also worried that if we don't lay out, it's helpful to me as a board member, if I have a question about a policy, to know whether it's going to come up in the next six months or three years from now. So I would like to know what's, I would like to see the plan.
Okay.
So those were the things I was planning to bring up as part of the board attorney evaluation, I think. Oh, and then we had also talked about a cost-benefit analysis of an additional district attorney, a school district attorney. And I didn't know if that was something that Dr. Atkins was planning to bring up in the 1920 budget, but I just wanted to put out there for board members, new board members who are not part of that conversation, that we did in fact have a conversation about all of the costs that we bear as a result of referring work outside and giving the construction that we're facing going forward. Do we want to consider going back to a three attorney district? Because at the last, 2010, when we went through that big boom, there was a third attorney on staff who had primary responsibility for all the construction. So I just wanted to throw those things out there so that it's a matter of record.
Thank you.
I was kind of under the impression we were going to workshop that attorney issue.
I'm sure we are, but I don't think, you know, I think in terms of the budget cycle, it's got to be sooner rather than later, if there's going to be a recommendation this year.
The job description is in the list that we received before the briefing.
That's right.
It is there.
But that's not, that's not what we were, we're not talking about the job description. We're talking about the potential of adding an additional attorney to handle things like-
Right. No, and I'm just saying, kind of in conjunction, it is there. And I did ask Dr. Atkins about some of those positions and when they were scheduled to go on, so.
Ms. Giovinelli?
So I just want to add to that. I agree with you, Kathleen. We need to, I would like to have a workshop regarding our policies in support of the law, especially with the situation with my husband and the gun thing. So I think it's really important to do sooner than later. That's a perfect example of why we need Neola, I believe, or at least discuss our policies and, like you said, so I'm very supportive of that.
Before, Chris, can I ask a question on Kathleen's? What would be the timeframe for discussion? You said that it needs to be moving forward fairly quickly because of the budget cycle. What would be the timeframe, and what steps would we be taking before we, it brought to a vote?
Would that be worked out between the chair and Dr. Atkins? So- In terms of the timing of a workshop?
It would have to be at least workshopped first.
Yes.
Right.
And is there any timeframe on when that would occur?
Well, I think Dr. Atkins is getting the message that it's something we want to talk about in order to, you know, get it into the next budget cycle. So he'll work with the chair to make sure that that workshop is scheduled in a timely manner so that we can do that, right? Isn't that typically how that works?
In addition to that, yeah, we are currently reviewing the entire budget, as you know. We've had those discussions in our individual board member meetings, and we'll have more coming up real soon, because we, I'm recommending we do another executive session, because we have some new board members, and also we're in contract negotiations, and that gives you an idea of what we want to propose moving forward in that area. But part of the new budget is looking at whether or not, you know, bringing on this third attorney would also help reduce our expenditures, particularly as it's related to the cost of construction and property acquisition. So yes. So I'll work with the chair, and we will get that on a upcoming workshop in the very near future, probably in January.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Ms. Giovinelli?
Okay. So I sent a quick email before our 2 o'clock meeting, and I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it. So I apologize for being short notice, but I have, out in the community, people have spoken to me, and it actually came up really regarding the Oversight Committee. And then I thought about, well, what about all our committees? Is, in the spirit of transparency, if we, if our advisory committees could be televised for the public to see them and watch them, and I myself, and if I can't attend like an advisory, like the finance, then I can be able to review it at my late night hours and watch something, and I think learn and be able to, if I had something to come to the board about for the public, they can come to, then to our meetings. But I thought if we televised it, because I looked and see, saw that we could hold about 18, and I think that our advisory committees are about that, right? I mean, that's about the attendance of all the chairs and so forth. And if they televised it, then it would just eliminate any, especially with the Oversight Committee, I think everybody's curious about that committee, and they would all be able to see that and watch it, either YouTube it later or live, just like our meetings. And so I just said, something I'd like to bring before the board and see what others think about it.
Yeah, so I thought we had already agreed the Oversight Committee was going to be filmed.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's in the policy.
Yeah. Okay. And then the other, the only thing I would say about doing the others is, we don't have another, we don't have video opportunity except at the maintenance.
Yeah, Canal Street.
Canal Street. So that, that would mean we would have to hold all of our advisory meetings at Canal Street. We wouldn't be able to do them here.
Why, I don't understand, they have all the side, why couldn't they all? I think they would fit. I don't, and then anybody that, yeah.
How do you sit around?
Because that's how you can video it.
Ms. Stillwell, could you approach-
Our advisory committees are scheduled on the same day. So that would be an issue.
There's only six, so.
If we're going to do it, everybody, everything currently would need to be done in here.
Right, there's only six. I mean, DAC is already video. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Ms. Stillwell?
So currently, if we were going to do that, they would all have to be done in the boardroom. That's the only place that we really have to do that.
Right.
Canal Street's technology isn't as great, but we could look at that. But my concern is that looking like over the next month, we have three advisory committees scheduled on the same day at the same time. So we obviously couldn't do all of them in here. So we'd have to relook at the schedule for all the advisories, and we'd have to stagger them out, and then we'd also have to look at the times, because it would be overtime for staffs.
Cost.
So that cost too, if that's something we want to do. So I can cost all that out, I hope after Atkins, I'm happy to do that.
Since the Oversight Committee has, doesn't have a schedule or anything yet, perhaps that could be one that would be, that we could potentially put in here.
Well, it already is, as you're saying.
According to policy.
Right. I mean, will that be here then?
I don't, I-
No, it's not live.
It's up to staff.
It's required to be recorded and then disseminated on the district's website. Yeah.
Well, my reaction to that is, the public is not, the people who agree to serve on our committees are not us. They're not public figures. And I know that on Finance Advisory, there's a high level of discomfort when people go in there with camera phones or phone cameras, whatever you call those, and, you know, are recording there. I don't, I don't want to make my advisory committee members uncomfortable, and the feedback I get is that that would make them uncomfortable.
Does it state that it has to be video? Can it be audio?
It is audio.
They are audio.
Just audio and not video?
Already.
Does the Certex Committee policy? It's audio and video. Yeah.
But the, like, Finance Advisory is audio.
Oh, no, the others, no, I'm sorry.
But no, what about DAC when it's in here? Then how's that?
DAC is video.
That's televised live.
Right. So not, I mean-
The breakout sessions are not, but everything in this room is.
So why don't we wait on some numbers from Ms. Stillwell and pick up the discussion at the next good of the order?
Because I think you have to speak to the people that are on that committee to have a permission.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, if people would like to, you know, when your, the liaisons go back and just ask, I mean, let's-
Because they may not want to be, and that may discourage them from participating.
Is that, all right, is that a fair?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll wait on numbers from Ms. Stillwell, and all of us will bring this back to our committees? Great. All right. My good of the order is removal of caps during the playing of the National Anthem at graduations. We don't have a district-wide policy regarding that. We have a district-wide policy regarding the playing of the National Anthem, but not the removal of caps. And I have, if my memory serves me correctly, I have not yet attended a graduation where caps are removed, and it's embarrassing to me. So I want to talk about whether that's something we want to, we can change as a district?
Oh, okay. I was confused. I was thinking that they're going to pin them all in their hair so they don't move out, so they're going to unpin their hair, and that could be another mess, trying to pick up bobby pins. It's just the boys to take it off.
Right.
During the anthem.
Like, Mr. LaRosa doesn't, didn't he have a, you want to speak to it?
It's my understanding that Mr. LaRosa required the boys to take off their caps during the National Anthem and did not require that of girls. I believe that across the district from, you know, from school to school, we don't have a protocol as it relates to students and taking off caps. We did have, the board, two boards ago, had really requested a standardization in terms of the posting of the colored guard and the National Anthem, so we are doing that consistently. We also have pretty consistent protocols as it relates to what occurs during a graduation. But that is not something that we have protocols around, the hats.
Wouldn't that also fall into, like in the schools, if the students and their families decide they're not going to participate in that, that they are, you know, can be exempted from it? So to say that everyone has to might be overstepping those.
Well, I mean, you can allow somebody, but to have baseline expectation, I don't think is unfair, is it? Remove cap for National Anthem? I mean, if people want to be exempted, they can approach the principal after the rehearsal and say-
So are you saying, though, that it, are you saying pro or con?
I'm saying pro.
That they should take it off?
Remove caps during the National Anthem, yes.
Well, Mr. Dotig, do you know the Constitution on this? Because I know the, unfortunately, the Florida Legislature, you know, I used to make my kids stand for the pledge, and now law is they don't have to even stand for the pledge. So how would it apply to this? I mean, I certainly agree that they should take their caps off, but to say they must, I'm curious how it would go with current law.
Well, there is a statute that requires students to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that statute went to the 11th Circuit, and the 11th Circuit said, it's a parental choice issue.
Right.
Let the statute stay on the books. However, the law in Barnett versus West Virginia, which is an old Supreme Court case, stands for the premise that individuals, this is not having to do with schools necessarily, but individuals cannot be forced to stand for the National Anthem. And the court acknowledged that, but said, well, this is a parental choice issue, and so they kept the statute on the books. Having said that, that's nothing, has nothing to do with a cap. So there are First Amendment implications, possibly. I don't want to sit here and give you legal advice whether or not it would be constitutional or not. I did hear Ms. Patrica say something to the effect of, well, you could have that as a, I forget what the word you used to Ms. Jordan just now, not necessarily, you didn't use the word requirement, but you could encourage it, so to speak.
Part of the rehearsal.
Right, part of the rehearsal.
It's like walking down the aisle.
But I would be remiss if I sat here and gave you chapter and verse in legal advice on the First Amendment issue that was just presented to me. So I would ask you to allow me to do some research on that issue and certainly provide you legal advice.
Before we ask him to do that, is it worthwhile? Would-
I think it's, I mean, I think it's a good, it's a respect thing, and I certainly endorse doing that. But that said, you don't want to open a can of worms that's going to be like somebody kneeling during the, during the National Anthem. And I, you know, I'd feel better if we had it checked out by the law before we make any decisions as a board.
So is that cool to ask him to do it, to do the research?
Was the issue basically that you saw at some schools they did and some they didn't?
I don't recall attending a graduation where they did.
I don't think they did at all, but I recall.
Oh, okay, because we, different schools.
Different schools.
So I think we're hearing that we'd like you to look into that and provide us with some feedback, please.
Indeed.
Any other questions, comments? Meeting adjourned at 4:24.
Well done.